Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday night, November 27 at 7:03 PM. We have two committee meetings tonight, the first one being City and Safety Services, and that is chaired by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nysel. Within this evening's agenda, we have a number of topics, beginning first with a presentation this evening for Mr. Glenn Crippen, who is here with us from HAPCAP. So he will be sharing with us an update on the CHIP program and educating all of us as well about HAPCAP. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. My name is Glenn Crippen. I am the Director of Housing and Community Development at Hoggings Athens Perry Community Action, and our agency is the administrator of the county's Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program. This is an affordable housing program that is federally funded. It's administered by the Ohio Development Services Agency in Columbus, and it is granted out to communities such as Athens County, and the City of Athens, and the City of Nelsonville, for instance. About four years ago, Athens County formed a partnership, which was much at the request of the state of Ohio, to partner jurisdictions together, to come together to apply for the CHIP funding through the county. The City of Athens is a partner to that program, the current CHIP program, where the county is the grantee, the county is the applicant, and much of the fiscal responsibilities and administrative duties are performed on behalf of the county. So the city is fortunate to partner with the county. From our perspective, it allows us to apply for more funding than it would if the city were to stand alone to apply for the funding. And the reason I am here tonight is simply to provide an update on the current program. The current program, we're right in the middle of a two-year program. It began September 1 of 2016. At the end of September 2017, the program was just about halfway through, and the state of Ohio requires that certain benchmarks be met for the program to be successful. That includes the number of completions that have been performed, as far as home rehabilitation, home repair, new home construction when it's applicable. We didn't have one in this program in the city, and so forth. And I wanted to let the city know that the county has successfully met its 50% benchmarks of completions and expenses, so that's great news. If we were not to meet that threshold, it would be counted against us in the next round of scoring when we apply again, hopefully in the spring. So the whole process will be coming up again in the spring for, hopefully, another award next fall. So we are halfway through the program, and we have been performing successfully with the county as a partner. Specifically, in the City of Athens, there still are some project slots still available for some projects, and I wanted to bring those to the city's attention, to the community's attention this evening. We had originally proposed to perform three owner-occupied rehabilitations. These are large-scale projects for rehabilitation of a home, and the objective of the program is to bring a home up to a set of standards defined by the state called the HRS, Housing Rehabilitation Standards. And we work with income-eligible households to perform these projects. So to be eligible for the program, a home must be at 80% of the area median income, which is considered a low-to-moderate-income household. And so, three-owner rehabs, 15-owner home repairs, and one rental rehab were proposed, and so far, we have completed nine of the home repairs out of the 15. So we still have six-owner home repair slots available. Now, the home repair program is less than the rehabilitation aspect of the program. The projects are smaller, in the amount of $5,000 to $7,000 to $9,000 each, and they are to address emergency repairs anywhere on the house, from the foundation to the roof. If we can't address the problem with that amount of money, we have to walk away from the home, unfortunately. And the same thing goes with the larger-scale rehabilitation activities, which are upwards of $40,000 to $45,000 each, and they can address many more issues in the home. So we have, out of the three-owner-occupied home rehab slots, we have completed one of those, and we still have two slots available. So the way that a person or a household can apply is to contact our agency at our housing office in Nelsonville, and the phone number there is 740-753-3062. And we do keep a waiting list and track of everyone that calls, and when we get these programs funded, we reach out to everyone, and we send out applications in the mail, make them available on our website, and we also have them available at our public hearing process, which occurs before the grant is submitted. And also, we also provide these at our Housing Advisory Committee meetings, which we'll need to form in the spring, which is a planning panel to talk about the housing issues and to find out the best ways to propose to the state for our next round of funding of how the grant is spent, should it be awarded. So that's just a little bit of history on the program. We're halfway through. The one that was awarded last year, things are going well, and we look forward to applying again next spring. And I just wanted to let you know that everything's on track, and even though there's still slots to fill, overall, as a county, which the City of Nelsonville is inclusive in, as a partnership, there's three jurisdictions in the partnership, and the grant award was over $1.2 million. So it's a lot of money, and it has, you know, a great ability to address the housing, affordable housing challenges in the community. So that's that, and that's all I have, really. I just wanted to provide that update to the city and to the community. And if you guys have any questions, or if anyone has any questions, I do invite them to call our housing office and inquire about the program, how to apply, if they're eligible, and what other services we may offer.
Thank you, Mr. Crippen. We do have a couple of questions from council, and I noticed our mayor as well. So we'll start with council. Councilmember Pappy.
Hi, Glenn.
Hi.
So the program is low-income?
It is. It is.
Can you give us some, so the viewing public has an understanding?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
A household of one, first off, low-to-moderate income, which we call LMI, we use that acronym a lot, for low-to-moderate income. It is defined specifically as a household that is at 80% of the area median income or less for the county. For a household of one, for instance, the amount is right around $30,000. And the more people that are in the home, it incrementally goes up very gradually. So it's a generous, fairly generous amount. You know, it's, we're allowed to address a lot of folks with that income range and have quite a bit of impact. So 80% of area median income, and that amount for a household of one, for instance, is right around $30,000 annually.
And that's both for the rehab program and the emergency?
Home repair.
Home repair.
Absolutely. Anything under the CHIP program, actually.
Okay. And then there's one other comment I want to say about CHIP?
Sure.
Because that's also the child. Do people confuse it with the Child Health Insurance Program?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. No confusion yet. No.
Okay.
Good question, though.
Yeah, all right.
I thought the same thing, actually, when I heard CHIP being used like that.
Thank you. Yeah, I believe we have a few more questions from council. Councilmember Smedley, right? Your hand up?
It was the same question, actually.
Okay. I believe we have Councilmember Gee, followed by President Nysel.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. I had two questions. What was the amount that was awarded on the rental, and what's the policy behind awarding money to a landlord to rehab?
Good question. The program is eligible to landlords. If the landlord itself is a low-to-moderate-income person, then there is no obligation to them. However, if they are over income or above the 80% of area median income threshold, they are required to contribute 50% of the project cost. So the rental aspect, it becomes very challenging because we get a lack, to be honest, there's not a large commitment from any landlords willing to spend those types of dollars. We would love to partner with any landlord that is, or that any LMI landlord who would not be obligated to pay those funds towards the program. One collaboration we have successfully performed in the past is partnering with Metropolitan Housing Authority, who is considered an LMI landlord because of the population they serve. So in that regard, that entity is not financially responsible for any repairs done on any of their homes. And should that be something that the county and the cities are interested in for the next phase, you know, we can include some rental repairs and some rental rehabs in the program. There are some in the CHIP program, just not in the city jurisdiction necessarily.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
President Nysel.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for coming tonight with the updates. And if I'm understanding correctly, you do have two slots available for the owner-occupied rehabs of the $40,000 to $50,000, that's the major?
Correct.
Program. Six-owner home repair slots in the $5,000 to $9,000 emergency repair.
Correct.
Okay. And then, we don't need to, we will need to reauthorize, is that correct, for administration next spring as they go to apply? And that'll be the next time we'll get to see you?
Absolutely.
Probably, when you come back for the reauthorization. But it's very helpful to have this update right now.
It is.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you for your support, and we look forward to working with the city in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Crippen. I do believe we have a question or comment from our mayor as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Glenn, can you give us a sense as to the level of outreach, you know, reaching out to the county and the cities in terms of these programs, I mean, other than it being on camera tonight?
Yes.
How's that getting out?
We, the level of outreach we perform is, not only do we have the citizen participation process at the beginning of the grant, but we are constantly receiving calls and educating the public at our housing office in Nelsonville. We perform outreach at our main office as well with clients that are coming in for the heat program. So we try to cross-reference and provide information to all of our clients coming in the door about CHIP and so forth. So, and we do receive a lot of inquiries, and we mail out an application to anyone that's called in the whole past year, and mail them an application when we are funded. And it's on a first-come, first-served basis. So that's a summary of the outreach we perform. Now, if the grant goes on, if the grant cycle goes on, we get closer to the deadline without having some of these done, we will perform additional outreach and perhaps do something in the newspaper, or collaborate, put something on the website, or to get, you know, more folks aware of the program, so.
I guess, I personally don't recall seeing anything in the papers for Athens, you know, for the citizens of Athens who might qualify, you know. Do you get many calls from the citizens of Athens about the grant?
Here and there. It's sporadic. It seems to be word of mouth, see people become aware of a project that's going on, and then we receive some calls. Traditionally, it's not always easy to fill the slots in the City of Athens, and the same goes with the City of Nelsonville. We don't have as many problems in the outlying parts of the county, but in the city areas, it seems a little tougher to get clients that are eligible for the program. So it's, you know, outreach is something we take very seriously, and it's a delicate balance between providing information, you know, the grant cycle, every two years, we reapply, and we try to work within that two-year time period to, you know, perform the objectives of the program. So it's, you know, if we were to, you know, ramp up a ton of awareness and outreach about the program and not get funded in the spring, that would be very unfortunate. So we try to balance out, you know, the amount of people applying for the program and keep the expectations realistic for the funding that the county may receive.
Glenn, I would contend that we're six months away from trying to meet the goal of the two-year program, and now is the time that I feel we need a push in the city of Athens.
Sure. Well, that's, and that's part of the reason I wanted to come here tonight, was to provide that update.
And if you could provide that to us, then we can also get it up on our website, so whether the documents?
Absolutely. And the work completion is actually through October of 2018, so we have a little more than six months. But yes, absolutely. Now is the time to perform the additional outreach, and hence, one of the reasons I'm here is to provide an update to the city about that.
Thank you. And I'll thank Scott in advance for helping us get that on the web. I believe we also have another question from Councilmember Reisner.
My question is, deals with the contractors. How are they, what standards do you set for people to do the rehabilitation work for these people, and how do you select them? Or do the participants select their own contractor, or do they do the work themselves?
No, they don't do the work themselves. The work is bid out. It is specified in-house by rehab specialists that we employ. They're highly trained and qualified individuals. I would trust them to write specs on my own home and work on my own home. They're very good at what they do. They write specifications, and they estimate the projects as well. And those are the estimates we use for the bids. And we do have to have a pre-qualified list of contractors, which is about 15 contractors long. That's one of the biggest challenges with the CHIP program, is maintaining qualified contractors to do the work. It's almost like a lost skill or trade to some degree, the carpentry work and the workmanship that we expect out of the program. But anyhow, the work is measured against the housing quality standards, the HQS, this is, or, I'm sorry, the HRS, Housing Rehabilitation Standards, set by the state. And projects are under warranty for a year after they're complete, and contractors are also bonded as well. So we have, the county has various protections against the performance of the contractors on the jobs.
Well, speaking of protection, about, do you have any particular concern about the elderly? You know, I've heard horror stories where they've been taken advantage of by, you know, unscrupulous individuals.
Yeah, it's absolutely, nothing is tolerated within our agency, nor is there a history of it even occurring within our CHIP program that I'm aware of.
Do you do any elderly homes?
Yes, we do, absolutely. Yeah.
And President Nysel, thank you.
One other question. Do you have, like, a few examples, just to give the public an idea of, like, maybe one or two kinds of emergency repairs, and then maybe some of the, if you have had a big home renovation, what that encompasses?
Absolutely. One of the most common home repairs are roof, a roof being put on, a porch being fixed that's otherwise falling in, for instance, plumbing and electrical, if we can address the house and get it up to the rehab standards. But roofing and foundation work and moisture in basements are all things we address. Furnace work, health and safety. We also look at the furnace and its combustion, and we look at all systems of the house to try to find out what is most feasible, what is most needed, and how the funds can best be used.
Thank you.
I'm guessing as well, too, that ADA accessibility is at the forefront as well.
It is, absolutely.
Wonderful.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
This is a federally funded program through HUD and the State of Ohio, so those things are absolutely at the forefront of all design.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's no further questions from the mayor's office or council, none from the public, thank you, Mr. Crippen.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Appreciate your time.
Moving on, we do have a few people present this evening to speak with us as well regarding an update from the Municipal Arts Commission, specifically Chair Member Carol Patterson is here this evening with us to discuss the traffic box wraps. So she has some updated information for us on this topic. We do have some slides which we can show. I believe that we saw some of these over the summer. Maybe not everyone was present for that. Does that sound familiar to the mayor's office? That we did look at some of these over the summer, or I believe maybe late?
For the traffic box wraps?
Yeah, some updates.
Long as after they were juried by AMAC. AMAC received them through the RFP, and then we did, once that was, that process had been gone through, then that's when we first got to see them and started, you know, sitting down with city engineer, which traffic control boxes do we utilize this year as we move forward?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and I believe, I'm sorry.
I've seen before than, I think I was here. I was. But now they've been assigned to their boxes.
Yes, sure.
And so it's pretty much ready to go, but we thought perhaps you'd like another opportunity to see them?
Thank you.
Are we, is it going to be just like?
I think so.
Oh, here they are.
Yeah. They're trying. Oh, I like that one. That's good. And maybe, Ryan, if you're able to run them through one more time slowly, we can do that, and if people have questions for Carol, we can, we can address that. This is a friendly reminder, this has already been funded, and it's, the money's already been appropriated, but this is an opportunity for updates. The mayor?
And while, while recycling through this, I can just tell you, some of the traffic box locations that we've looked at, and again, I'm not going to sit and assign art to these, but East State Street and East Park Drive, East State at Walmart, US 33 at Albany Road, Richland Avenue at Palmeroy. So we've gone through and identified, like I said, 10 different locations around the city, College Street and Mill Street.
Thank you, Mayor. And that's coming from collaboration with the Public Works Director, and we've identified through the Municipal Arts Commission as well, collaborative effort to identify the boxes throughout the city where these would be appropriate. And I'm thinking, Carol, is there anything else, too, that you want to add?
Well, the only other thing that I think is kind of important is that on the boxes, especially, the adjudication is totally blind. They don't know who the artists are, and that will become a little bit more significant in a few minutes because we have this recurring artist. And so I wanted you to understand that sometimes, and with the case of the boxes, because there's so many, and we were dealing with about 100 different images to get 10, it was totally blind from the artist. But as we move into the next agenda item, our artist for the Stimson Avenue mural is with us this evening, and this is his third arts award from the Arts Commission. So I wanted you to know, we usually don't know who it is that we're adjudicating. So it's just pure talent, what can I say? But I think these new pieces for the boxes are magnificent and varied, and just a wonderful group of applicants this time, and so I hope you'll look forward to seeing them go up soon.
Thank you. I do believe we have a couple of questions from council. Councilmember Pappy?
I just wanted to make a comment, Carol, is that someone contacted me a while back because they wanted to commission one of the artists because they loved what was on one of the boxes. And so it was great that nobody knew, and I think that's a good plan, but the Service Safety Director was able to?
Yes.
Provide the name of the artist, and that family is commissioning that particular artist to do some artwork for their home. So I thought that, I mean, it's a really, another way that art goes out into the community, but it's also good for the, for the artist in case, you know, there's some?
Absolutely.
Some money to be made, you know, so I thought that was, so it's the Service Safety Director who holds the artist's art?
Well, actually, I get them as well.
Or you guys, you do, Carol? Okay, Carol does.
Yeah.
Okay.
I send them to her.
Okay, great.
We entered the honorary agreement, so we're contractual.
So if somebody, I guess, out there in the, in the world, out there decides, you know, I would really like to?
Hire that artist.
Hire that artist, there is a way to find out.
Well, we are archiving the artists and their pieces, and the name of the art and the locations. We'll do that with this round, we'll do it with the final round, I say final, the third round, because then it would be nice to put together essentially a walking map, kind of trifold information where people could try to frequent as many as possible, because there will be 30 with the next, the third round.
And I found it very gratifying how excited the artists were when they were informed. I had many phone calls and emails just bubbling over with being so pleased that they had been selected to have their art show, their artwork shown this way. So it's all good.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. Are there other questions or comments? You know, and I'll offer a friendly reminder to all of us, as well as TV land, you know, part of our motivation as a community to address the wraps is a deterrent to graffiti. So having artwork, statistics and data indicates that when you have artwork up in public places, that it's less likely to become fodder for graffiti. And so this has been a wonderful program, in my opinion, and I applaud, again, the city, both administration and council, for embracing the Municipal Arts Commission's lead on this. So thank you to all parties.
And the idea of the wraps is not unique to Athens?
No.
But the way we do it is quite unique, and our result is that we have such an amazing variety on the boxes. I've been in other communities where they've had a theme on the boxes and had similar designs on each, but I think this process that we're using is very exciting and certainly gives us a representational picture of what our artists are doing.
Thank you. If there's no further comments or questions on the wrap, we'll move forward and proceed with the next topic. Is there anything, President Nysel, would you, anything you want to add?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Carol.
Can I bring him up?
Sure, if Mr. Wild is comfortable with being on screen. So the next topic is an acknowledgement of the progress we've made with the Stimson Avenue mural, which, again, the Municipal Arts Commission has been trudging along with this process. It's a long story here, which I'll try not to, we probably won't need to bore everyone with, but it was challenging to determine if the space, if we had permission to use the space and moving forward and progressing there. So we worked through all those challenges and dilemmas there, and it was opened up for submissions, and I'll turn it over again here to Municipal Arts Commission Chair.
So, this is Kevin Wild?
Keith.
Who is the artist for the Stimson Avenue. And we actually reopened the application process because we had a small selection to start with, but he was one of the original ones to apply, and so then it worked out wonderfully. And here is the artwork, and I was just saying to the mayor before the meeting began that of the artwork that came in, this one kind of took your eye across. It, coming around that corner, I think this will be very, very striking and impressive on the wall, so.
It's not the whole.
Would you like to say anything?
Well, it was very nice of, for the introduction, and I want to thank AMAC for, I guess, giving me a jury spot or a recommendation, that's what we'll call it.
He also has one of the wraps, and did the? He also has one of the wraps and did the lift station over by?
West Green.
Depot.
Yeah.
Depot Street Lift Station.
Yeah.
Yeah, and both those were really exciting opportunities. Again, I feel really honored to participate with the city on projects like this. I think these are great ways for artists to contribute to our community and I'm really proud to be part of that. The Stimson mural proposal, we're only seeing a very, probably about a third of the actual mural. It's an incredibly long composition, it's about a nine-to-one ratio, which if you've ever worked on a piece of paper, that would be, that would be odd for most of us. So it was a fun challenge. It's a, it's a, it's a release of white doves and the concept was, again, we're missing so many of the segments. But to provide something that people could easily interpret in the most optimistic terms. And it's intended to, on the one end, sort of grab us with color and sheer bold size and then leave us with kind of a beautiful release. And we're seeing the middle segment, so some of what I just said probably doesn't make a lot of sense given what we're looking at.
We have the larger image.
Yeah, and councilmembers, Mr. Wild, for what it's worth, councilmembers do have the full, complete image on our computers. And we also received, courtesy of the mayor, last week, a printed color version handout as well. So we are able to appreciate the full perspective and?
Yeah, that's, that's most of it.
And I will add that although I did not adjudicate on this particular project, I was there when the adjudication took place. And this idea, the feeling of hope and positive reaffirmation was a major point in their choice. They just loved that. They felt uplifted, so you didn't got this.
Thank you. Let me see if there's any questions or comments. So we'll start with the mayor.
Just, just to kind of help put this in perspective, because the image you did see is not even, well, it's about a half. There's six other doves that are in the full mural that council has seen, but the viewing audience didn't get to see tonight. They just saw a portion of it. There's six more up there. So this is, this is a pretty expansive piece that's going to be in the city. And what better space than on the mural, the Stimson Avenue wall, which is a high-vis mural wall in the city mountains.
Thank you. Yeah, we do have some councilmember questions and comments as well. I'll start with Councilman McGee.
Thank you, Councilman Butler. Mr. Wild, I am a great fan of your work. I want you to know that.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention that if people have not seen your exhibit at Baker Center, if it's still there, it's one of the best things I've seen in Athens. And I would surely recommend second floor of the Art Gallery at Baker Center. Your, your paintings are incredible. They should, they're louvre material, as far as I'm concerned. So I urge people to catch it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Katsas.
Yes, thank you. So, my, my question is, how did the original, now that original, the mural that's there right now is probably over 20 years old, would be my guess. And that probably predates AMAC. Am I, am I correct in that? I mean, how did that end up there? Do we know what the history is of that piece?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, that's how we ended up with an arts commission.
Okay.
Because, what group was it?
317. 317 Board.
317 Board came forward with young people that wanted to paint a mural. They brought the design and council, I was on council. And so, when it was brought, it was like, well, we don't know. And so, after the process had occurred, council said, you know, we don't really want to get into the business of adjudicating art. Wouldn't it be great if we had an arts commission to get our artist's work out there? So that was how it started and that was 17 years ago, not quite 20.
Okay.
But they, it was teenagers that put the design up. And it was very lively and colorful, but it has faded. So it gives you an idea of why we have language about faded art and what we do about that and which is, go back to the artist and confer with the artist about, do they want to renovate it? Do we want to start over with new artwork for the space? And this was part of what had to be established with this particular mural. And the language that we have is that if the artwork has outlived its artistic life and has faded or damaged, that it can be decommissioned. Meanwhile, the 317 Board said, yes, go ahead, paint over it, that's fine. So it took a long time, but we're glad we're here. It's such an iconic space for Athens and what an exciting design to have there.
Thank you.
Great.
I believe Mayor Patterson had a few more comments. Thank you.
Just real quick, and Keith, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot, but not on the spot. I mean, I have the application in front of me, the proposal that came forward and the name of this is, it may have already been mentioned, is release. And one of the things that Keith wrote in here is symbolic.